But Mayor Dino Ward one.
Stephanie Kramer Ward two.
Jim Wright Ward three.
Dr. Lonnie Clayton Ward two.
Sherry Mitchell Mayor.
Roger Manette Ward one.
Jeff Tibbott Ward three.
Alrighty, any conflict of interest statements?
Um, I'm not sure, because I don't, I think there may be a conflict of interest with an agenda item.
Which I-
No? Okay, okay. I wasn't sure who the-
If you have a financial interest in the outcome, if you were a family member, a daughter, son has a, as a financial interest in the outcome of it.
I wasn't sure if that was, because Charlie-
Um...
Oh!
Pledge, and, and, but we're still doing it.
So you can declare a conflict of interest, but it's mostly directly financial, if you or your family benefits from it, uh, and how to be voted on.
Yeah, but I just, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what the agenda topic is, my, my husband works for the city, so I have to, it talks about responsibilities of an employee, which, I don't know if it's my husband or not.
It's, I don't believe it's-
It's an executive session item, so you would not have a conflict.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Let's, let's go back and do a do-over since I skipped a whole bunch of important stuff. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Sure. (laughing)
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Who would like to sing the prayer?
I would like to do so. Lord, uh, let's bow our heads, Lord, thank you for us being able to come together, and to start a new year, and a new refocus on both serving you and serving the citizens above and below, it's got everyone's, uh, the guidance, please find everyone's conversations today, provide us with your guidance, should we pray? Amen.
Any citizens comments?
No ma'am.
Alright.
No citizens.
No citizens today.
I don't know, Christmas, he's, he's ahead, huh, Joe?
Alright, next item on the agenda is a review and approve the consent items. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Let's go ahead and convene into an executive session, if that's our next item on the agenda. Or Drew, do you want us to stay out here, or do you want us to go in there?
Well, there's only, well, no, we need to go in there. Let's, let's stick with the format.
Give us about five minutes or so. Let me just throw it out to you.
I probably have to text him a left track.
Where?
Well, she's taking my son delivery.
Are y'all out today? Am I coming in? No?
It's concerning us so much.
I bet you're bad.
Me. Not me.
Charlie.
You gotta say?
Session.
Yeah, I'm like, there's no easy secret to this.
Not fair anyway.
Did you need to make a presentation or anything? Did you need to say anything?
I was just wanting to try to start coming to this to hear the questions, that's making that sort of thing. I didn't realize I had a reserved seat though.
I know it's packed. It's a packed house in here.
I'm telling you. What's y'all's address of the new building now? Is seventy-nine twenty-five?
Seventy-five two five.
Seventy-five twenty-five, seventy-five. There was a fellow that I text you the other day, they were going to deliver the, um, car case.
Yeah.
He was back before about, ooh. And then, did y'all want to go off the deputy came to check?
Oh, yes sir, he did. He came by yesterday morning, I thought, or whatever day it was, is it month?
Day before yesterday?
Yeah, and he came in, he's like, I was telling the check, y'all was alarm around? I said, yeah, it just been acting crazy lately.
So I, I think that, did y'all call your alarm company to get the trade address?
Well, uh, did they come to y'all?
Yeah, well, when it came in, I heard it come across the sheriff's office, that it was thirteen-five-sixty River Oaks Boulevard. So I looked it up, and it went coming up with call, uh, so the deputy showed up, and I stepped outside, and I said, uh, I don't know where that address is. So I think your alarm-
Fire, we need to put our address, call them.
Yeah, y'all need to call them and have it checked.
We need. Take some communication, right? Fire communication, fire. Yeah, that, our sensor on our back door is messed up or something, so when we set the alarm, I think somebody's coming in.
Uh-huh.
So I'm like, I'm just not gonna set it, but let it come out, but I'll have to deal with it.
You know, you could bypass that, that, that particular door.
I tried, but, um, it still shows up as an alarm, so I'm scared to set it. Like, it still shows up as a notification on the screen, so I'm scared to set it.
Did, uh, who, who put that in for y'all, you know?
Texas Fire Communications.
They made a difference than what I knew.
What do y'all have?
We, uh, Safe and Sale.
Okay, that's who we used to have.
Yeah.
It's not, it wouldn't happen, by the way. My husband's got news, and they, and they carry, like, they're like, yeah, they're like, my husband, they're like, they're like, they can't hear you, and I'm like, I'm like, yeah. Still hear his voice, so different tone. We, so when, it, it's like, if there's other things going wrong, we can, we can make it easier.
Yes, work.
So good, we all come somewhere, we're like, what did they say? What did they say? And then I'm like, I try to play it back, and then I'm just like, whatever, what's it, I'm like, I don't know, because I'm telling you what it said. That's what I'm saying, we, we suck at church. We used to, but we would have turned white, and we'd have sit kind of away from it, because we didn't want to hear it, and everybody else was talking. Yeah, it didn't matter. I should have. Oh, I know, and it's a girl. Damn, are you not playing now? He's like, pretty long, and we're going to, you know, you were singing up for Christmas, and he's like, and I love it, because I can hear what he's doing. He hates soap operas, and he didn't say it, but he got to, he got to use me, because he could be very sensitive. My brother, it's happening about that. When I get a little bit of that, I'm being able to hear you every day, but you, I said, okay, you go back here, and I'm like, yeah, I'm like, oh. Well, that demon said, I can't wait until the first day, then I can turn and suck her off. I said, that's me. What did he say? I love you so much. He's like, right, really, like, I'm trying to, like, you can't, you can't, I'm like, get what the ring? So it's a personal, so I, I worry about it, but he's like, I'm sure you're not. I'm sure I like to do this thing. This is the worst TV show. Bring me entertainment. He said, he's crazy. And I'm making it for sure. And I, but, when does she get this kind of? I know, they're on my calendar, whatever. It's one of those, I want to guess. I want to guess, I know, I'm changing some time, I'm like, I'm going to take you, I'm going to see. I would like to see Jerry, I would like to see Charlie. I think, uh, I would see, um, I just, I don't know, like, I'm just, all these people. Because they're all, I put them into, I'm like, I'm like, oh. And then he, I'm just waiting, he's getting pissed. Oh, yeah, well, are you coming out on this?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he showed me that thing up today. And she's laughing about it. It's just that he goes, he carries the cross, and he's like, hey, he's like, how much he has, he carries the handkerchief on his. Look forward to it. We did both, too. We got the bar shit roaring in here.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, hang on.
I know.
What does everybody have in common? What y'all doing there, Drew?
I mean, he's-
I had, I had COVID, uh, check now, like, we were like, we were like-
Yes.
I had COVID. He's bothering, they're all like- Now, come down, cough it, or something else.
For three days there, you'd be like, sad.
We're gonna bring the meeting back to order.
That was some good stuff we added there.
That I can't edit out, okay, so careful.
Alright, the meeting's back to order. Our next item is number eight, review approved action item. First up is consideration, discussion, and approval for the change in the employee's title. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm like-
And a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next item is up for consideration, discussion, and approval is city council's responsibilities. Have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Oh.
I'll start the discussion, because I'm the one that basically put people on these positions. The people that I put on these positions, I feel are the strongest for these positions, and also put a second. Um-
Can I, can I hold just a second?
Okay.
I just want to ask this question. Do you, do you have anything that you need to say, because there could be a fire or something, you'd have to run out, and then you wouldn't have got-
He's got his phone.
Okay, you're just good, okay.
Anyway, everybody has a chart in their folders, and basically what I did is I put, like, for example, water sewer operations Jim with Stephanie as a second. Because we have two-year alternating terms, we need to basically teach each other all positions. You know, if Jim can't handle something, then Stephanie will have the knowledge to do what needs to be done within the water department. Same with, uh, road and drainage, I have Bud, Ronnie, Ronnie, yeah. Lonnie and Roger together as a second. Browns and buildings, I expanded this to also include parks and recreation, because I'm a firm believer that parks and recreation is part of community development. I feel that Roger and Stephanie would be a good asset on these particular items, they can-
Like, I'm on everything.
I know.
She is, we're all, we're all doing it together.
Let's go.
Because, you know, there are, there are parks and recreation grants out there for playground equipment and things like that, and I can guide you guys on some of the contacts that I have, like with waste management, and Republic, and places like that, that were, they're willing to give us money. Um, community events, Jeff, Lonnie, Stephanie, and then image and appearance would be Stephanie and the mayor.
That's not what this says.
It does.
Any discussion?
Community events, it says Jeff, yeah, that's what we're doing, this discussion, yeah. Okay, so, um, this says, community events, it says Jeff, and then it says Lonnie and Stephanie.
That's what she just said.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear it, Lonnie.
Well, I've got Lonnie on quite a few different things, so I didn't-
Now, I have another question. Okay, so you, these lines that are drawn here, in other words, like, where you have a line, you got the A B, A B, A B, and then you got the line going here, is she, or, or, I'm using this for instance, is this, is this Jim and Stephanie are over all of this right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's not split right here?
No.
And then she's doing this, and he's doing that?
No.
Okay, I got it.
And the A and the B is for who's the lead and who's-
Who's secondary?
The reason why, the reason why I'm asking that question is, is because on this right here, it, it's got roads, and then it goes down to the Jefferson County with drainage, okay, and then my name wasn't under the Jefferson County drainage, which, the Jefferson County is, is the same place.
Yes. So under that, under that, under that, you're-
So it doesn't matter, I mean, it's all, yeah.
Yes, under, under roads and drainage?
That's good.
You're, you're the lead, you got to get a lead, under, yes.
And we'll be your helper.
Exactly.
And, and our mentor, um, showing us the road.
And I also want to say that on the, um, who's over the grass cut, on here?
Browns, buildings, parks, and recreation. Roger and Stephanie.
Okay, so, anything y'all need to know about the contractor that we have, or what he is supposed to be finishing up, which, and we probably need to talk about that he hasn't done, then I'll, I can, I can tell y'all what he hasn't done yet that was approved a year before, over a year before. The other guy quit, so it didn't get done, so he took it at that price a year later, but it still hadn't been done, so-
Coffee will be ready at eight o'clock.
Yeah, we need to get it, we need to get, make sure we get on top of that.
Good turnover.
You know, a, a, a comment on that, uh, before we go into the details in all of these events, all of the line items are subject to change.
Yeah.
If there's a more appropriate place, or a more appropriate person to follow up on something, then we ought to get together and do that. It's not because, hey, the sign's down, okay, who needs to do it, all right, how can I help you do it, or who's got the time, or whatever. It's just kind of, you know, who's got roads.
So that brings up a question on that. So if we wanted to get together and discuss that, do we have to do that in a forum?
No.
Or can we do that on the side?
Do it one-on-one.
Yeah, you can do it with the-
Just do it, you can do it one-on-one.
Actually, I can meet with, like, you and Stephanie, since y'all are over that, three's not a quorum.
Yeah.
And then I can tell y'all, like, points of what I can tell you.
It's like, I'm like, he's talking about for the grass cutting, right now, according to our budget, we're at twenty-nine percent when it comes to grass cutting. Just, just so that, you know, you have to look at your budget.
Is, is the gra, did the grass cutting get, get divided between the house cleaning up and the other part?
Totally separate.
Okay.
Yeah, totally separate.
I have a question, just, okay, okay, Stephanie?
You work eight.
Nine to five job.
You work three hour week plus?
Sixty hour week.
Sixty hour week plus, and it's kind of a demanding job. And this lovely question is, how do you feel about this?
The only thing I would say is being backup on so many, like, I don't mind being a focus and a backup on one or two, but I think adding that third one just is pushing it, so.
Well, I mean-
Because if they're, if they're all, like, at a basketball game, and then I got-
Then you call me up, and I'll back you up. But it's like, you know, community events with Jeff, Lonnie, and Stephanie together, Stephanie, if you're not available, Lonnie can be available.
Right.
I'm not a backup on anything, so if you want, if you wanted me to back up-
I'd rather, I'd rather be off.
Everything that you're on, you're the lead.
I'm only on one name. Only on there once.
Yeah, he's only on here once.
My name's only on this thing one time. But I'm just saying that if, if somebody needs a backup somewhere-
I'd rather not be part of the maintenance, only because I think there might be more conflict with, um, Charlie.
Well, that's where Roger takes over.
But if I have to do anything when he's not available, I don't know.
Well, it's the same.
The office.
Okay.
Now, like, Heather brought up a good question, because I'm eight to four-thirty on my job. For example, I fly on the twenty-six to go to Utah, Trenton, Utah, and I won't be back until February the fourteenth.
Okay.
But I'm being mobile, you know, and emails, of course, but if it's a directness where I need to physically be there-
I think that one needs to change.
I, I want to dwell kind of on what she said about the signs and stuff that she's on down here at the bottom. That does directly conflict with her husband and the hours that he puts in, because he is ordering signs, he's-
But I can still go through the office.
But I'm the backup for her, so it doesn't create a conflict.
Yeah, so that- Okay.
Well, you know, to me, if that's an issue, you move the signs to grounds and buildings, because to me, that's where it ought to go.
Yeah, take that one item off of there and move it up.
The whole point, at the end of the day, is to have a working council, and whatever you guys can't do, even though I work full-time, I will step up and I will fill the holes.
Let, let me make a suggestion on this. The, as, as, as far as the specific items, and each one, those can be moved around from any time we want.
They can be taken off the list.
And, and, there, there's some needs to be added. I've already added a couple on Roger's list.
And that's, that's fine, too. This is just a guide to get it started, because last year it took us almost, what, three or four meetings for you guys to make up your mind on just the responsibilities.
So this is not set in stone. It's, it's a good way to get started and have discussion.
No, but it's-
Please, Jim, finish. Please.
I would just suggest that we focus on the primary responsibility, and where we've got time, initiate the secondary. I mean, if we got, Stephanie shouldn't be on four items. I mean, that's not fair to her, especially, uh, because she's working. Lonnie's not the lead on any of them. Now, Roger, Lonnie, and Stephanie obviously are working full-time, Jeff's working, only ones that don't do anything are me and Bud, and we interfere with Heather, and Sabrina's ability to do their job. I'm being down her every day. So, I, I, I would suggest that, that, you know, I, I don't know what you're good with, I don't want to make decisions for any of y'all, but I, I would think that you shouldn't be on more than two. Lead on one and, and a backup on a second one. Because primarily, most of what I've got to do, if I'm not here, and there's something with the water plant, it's, it's going to go to Sabrina, and she's going to deal with it. Or the contractor's going to deal with it, because he gets the call. You know, the office gets the call, they get the alarms, and, well, just like yesterday, he stopped in, said, hey, I want you to know that we got a problem with the, the generator down at the sewer plant. Okay. He was just informing me. He's already on it. He told me what he'd done, he'd lined anybody up, dude. I, I'm not concerned about any immediacy.
I mean, like you said, it's not set in stone. I mean, can we just move on and maybe look at it again and revise it?
Well, let, why don't we make it, why don't we make it where it's a sign now? Okay, so, so everybody kind of has a general idea. I unfortunately agree with the mayor, that we don't need to wait four months before we-
No.
Because it gets-
Why don't we just go ahead and say this is it, other than, let's take Stephanie off of the grounds, take her off of that, and I'll be the backup, and Roger be the lead. That'll make me a lead and a backup.
That's a good idea.
I like that, I like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then let's take the street signs, like Jim said, he said the street signs ought to be under grounds and maintenance anyway. Why don't we put the street signs under grounds and buildings and maintenance?
That'll work.
Okay, and then that way, you know, the bottom part won't be a big deal, you know?
So yes, the signs, or-
Signs throughout the city, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Just the signs.
Yeah, just the signs throughout the city, that's all.
Alright.
Just move that up there to the grounds thing, and let that be a, I'm just, this is just my part. I'm not, I'm not trying to step on anybody else's toe. This is just what I got to say, so, anybody else has any other suggestions?
Well, and the only reason I put Roger and Stephanie on grounds, buildings, parks, and recreation is because of the ability that I think that Stephanie and Roger can bring to the table on possibly helping us to find grants to approve, like, the parks and things like that.
But-
I can still help him.
As Jim said, as Jim says, that don't take, that does not take Stephanie off of helping.
Right, I can help in any way, yeah.
She's not assigned to that.
So we'll have Bud and Stephanie as a backup down on it?
No, just put Bud, but I'm just saying I can help if there's some sort of administrative-
Anybody can help. I can, I can tell Jim, he's got twenty water meters that are broken, he needs to get them fixed. I can tell him that, you know, and I'm not over one.
Yeah. Jim's going to tell you no. Alright, any more discussion?
Yeah, one, one, just while we dig down in detail, let me make a couple. One of them on the grounds and buildings, we need to have them on inspections, we need equipment at safety inspections, there's a line item there, we need to develop a list to make sure, fire extinguishers are checked, and exit lights get checked, uh, whatever those items are, for the, for all of our buildings and all of our, uh, parks and-
That's a, that's a good one, Roger, and we can, we can delegate that directly to the maintenance people out, Charlie, out here, we can direct that directly to him, like, starting the generator once every six months, uh, that, we have gasoline generators. We can direct that directly to him, like starting the generator once every six months, uh, that, we have gasoline generator. Starting that once every six months.
It's actually listed undergrounds and buildings. Maintenance and improvements, City Hall Civic Center Maintenance and Improvements. That's part of maintenance.
I think it's, I think Jim was saying like a list of kind of calibration or, um, retooling, yeah.
So basically something to work on.
A checklist. Develop a checklist.
A maintenance schedule, basically.
Yeah.
Make sure the exit light part.
Something comes out of a tickle file monthly that says, okay, here's you need to check.
Yep.
Two fire extinguishers.
That's right.
In the civic center, one in the, whatever we got. I mean, we don't want all we got right now, I think we do, but anyway, that needs to be done. Uh, the other, the other two I got real quick were the civic center use and publicity to rent it out, you know. I, I think that's, you probably implied, Jim, but, you know, if we're gonna rent it out, we ought to figure out, what's, but how do we do that? Anyway.
All right, any more discussion?
And where is that responsibility in, in this setup here?
I would think, I would think it would be on the community events, the newsletter.
Parks and Recreation?
No, not for, for the use of civic center.
See, I, I have asked.
I would assume it'd be under community events.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what, that's what, yeah, community events, that'd be in the newsletter.
But make it a dot, make it a dot to promote this, to, you know, putting a newsletter out saying that we're gonna rent the civic center in out, doesn't put it out there for the entire Beaumont Golden Triangle area.
Shouldn't it be like the civic center?
Actually, it was already discussed, and if I can find my notes, that Jeff is the one that sets the rates.
And under newsletter.
And.
Well.
I don't have it, but anyway.
What, what I asked for a year ago was the responsibility for this building. I, I'll accept it. I want the responsibility of this building. There's a lot of stuff in here. If it's, and that's when we started changing the locks so that we could have controlled access, but everybody here will have access. We didn't know who all had a key to the building. We've got equipment here now and we're upgrading our equipment over the years and, and, you know, it's just, we, we want, I wanted to be the point person on this particular building for that reason.
That's right. By definition, that's big Rogers, but by initiative and interest that's yours, that's fine.
But I agree with Lonnie that it's kind of a community, talking about the renting out of it because eventually if we do have a website that's more functional, not so clunky, you could have a calendar of availability for the building. So it's a little bit more user-friendly and they don't have to call Sabrina and say, is it available?
Okay. Ready to vote.
All right. Can I have a motion?
We already have a motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item up is discussion, discussing the potential date and time for the city hall, uh, town hall, city council workshop for twenty twenty-five.
Hey, Mayor, that was approving that with that change, right?
Right, approving by change.
With the signs moved up to that other thing, okay.
Sabrina's got the notes on it.
Okay.
All right, um, Sabrina sent us all an email with, I think, two dates?
Yes.
Sabrina, will you tell us what the dates and times are so that we can discuss?
What's the date?
Twenty-third and thirtieth.
So next Thursday or the Thursday following?
At six-thirty? So that's what you guys want?
Next Thursday?
I would, I would like to start the voting for the thirtieth.
All right.
It gives us two weeks to promote it, uh, it gives us two weeks to get our stuff together and put a, a great agenda together. Um, and because we have five weeks this week of this month.
I wish that we could do it earlier, but that's just me.
I think there were, you're not available next, uh, next Thursday, right? Somebody said they were not available.
Oh, no, I just couldn't come at like, I think they were trying to do it like four thirty or something. I'm available either day.
Yeah, there was somebody that said they couldn't be.
And do it at like three o'clock. They were trying to make it like three or something like that.
Right.
I won't be here for the thirtieth.
Well, it's not mandatory, just to let you know, I mean, it's nice to have everybody here.
But, you know, I mean.
So let's, let's just basically take a vote. All in, all in favor of doing it on the thirtieth at six-thirty?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a, aye.
Okay.
So three, three-three.
So can we talk about the task first?
And I'm only, I'm only opposing because with this being his first term and this will be his first opportunity to actually engage in a city hall meeting, that's why I voted against it. Because I'm actually available, fortunately, on both dates.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you're not available on the thirtieth?
No.
Oh, well then.
So is anybody not, anybody not available on the twenty-third?
Well, I agree with Jeff's side of that thing that we have time to promote.
And look at the weather that's coming in next week.
Be better on the thirtieth.
We're gonna be coming out of a freeze.
Uh, and I understand about.
Twenty-eighth, when are you leaving?
I'll leave on the twenty-sixth.
Can we do it on a Wednesday?
That's bad weather.
Can y'all move it to February?
Wednesday's gonna be bad weather.
We can do it in February.
We could do the first week of February.
Is Wednesday the next?
You might want to check Super Bowl dates.
Those two days were perfect. So when will you be back?
I'll be back on February the fourteenth at ten-thirty at night.
Oh, you're gonna be gone for a while. Okay, so.
I mean, I, I understand. It's, it's not, you know, and, and like you said, next week is bad weather and why have people on the roads is necessary. I'd rather safety first.
I'm definitely not trying to kick.
Let me make, let me make a comment. The most important, that our dates are important, but the most important thing is the dates that are most compatible with getting the maximum number of citizens here.
True.
By having two weeks.
And I agree with the point that Jeff made then.
Yeah, about the weather. I don't know what it is.
Well, the next two weeks are a little monkey.
Roger can, um.
He can submit his ideas.
He can dial in a wire.
That's fine.
Normally for a, a meeting or visit, we discuss, you can't attend remotely, but for a workshop like this.
Workshop, we can.
What, correct. What about doing, I mean, do, okay.
He's gonna attend at the moment.
He can do remote.
Agree with the thirtieth? And that gives us enough time to promote it? Yes?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Could we do it on the twenty-ninth?
Uh, no.
No.
That does affect you?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion?
Time. Do we stuck on six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
On Thursday.
That's non-negotiable?
It was just, it was just something that's consistent with our other meetings. Uh, I, I, I grew, that must my only, that was my only stickler for six-thirty, just because it's the same time we have all our other meetings, but I'm, I'm open for whatever.
I mean, it runs later and we're gonna have an open meeting. I mean, I just thought maybe if we did.
Start.
I, I would say start it at six.
Six?
People coming in from work, that would still give them enough time.
Still gives them enough time.
With me, I wouldn't go in.
They can ask her question, leave them.
It takes thirty minutes off the backside. You know how people started walking out, you know, as it gets later, did you start leaving? Did you, you know?
Okay.
All right, so.
Any more discussion?
Thirtieth at six.
So ultimately, thirtieth at six?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor on the thirtieth at six P.M.? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Motion carries. All right, number nine, the discussion of New Year's Eve expense report.
Mayor, I have another question. I'm sorry.
Is it on the agenda, sir?
It's on the, it's, it has to do with what we just talked about.
It's too late, we voted on it.
But is there gonna be some kind of a schedule like a, or a bullet head point thing like?
Agenda?
Yeah.
For that meeting? Not necessarily agenda, but bullets like we had before.
How about if we talk about that after this meeting? Cause that's what they've already started at the Whiteboard and City Hall.
Yeah, so Jim, so you can, you can put it on Facebook. People might say, I like that. I want to go see that. I want to see this.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I made a dummy agenda and sent it to Jeff and Sherry, cause I didn't want to get involved in the communicating too many people. And, uh, Jeff had made a bunch of additions for, and, you know, so, uh, you know, I could share it in here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what's not on the agenda.
Let's, let's share it after.
Have some kind of organization.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we normally do have.
So let's, let's go ahead and move on to our discussion of New Year's Eve expense report, and that'll be led by Jeff.
Okay. So I turned my final report in on, um, January eighth. Uh, I do have a, a synopsis, if you will. Um, our budget was three thousand and we actually spent twenty-eight thirty-five. Um, as that compares to twenty-three, we spent thirty-two hundred dollars last year, so we saved a couple of hundred dollars. Um, the, which was good. That, I, I like being able to save money. And so that was it. We had a great, great turnout. Um, my head is down during that event, so I didn't see what everybody reported in, but I was told that there was, there was a really, really good turnout. I did speak to a few people before the fireworks show started that came in from Sour Lake, came in from Beaumont, and, um, I like, I like the traction that the city's getting. Um, I will also say that by July, our, our next firework event, we will have a licensed, um, pyrotechnic special events coordinator overseeing this. Um, it was brought to my attention last year that it would be a really good idea to get that done, and the more we dig on it, the more it's like, it's a requirement. Uh, what we did do is confirm with our insurance that we are covered for whatever we do, and we put a, a rider on it last year. She said it was not necessary, but I talked to our underwriter last year and she did put a, a rider on this policy to, to cover that specific event, but she said it didn't cost us anything. It was just something to, to placate my, my conscience, but it's not necessary. So, um, from that aspect, we've, I've already got the materials. Uh, we're studying for the test. When I was ready to take the test, it wasn't available here locally and I did not want to go to Houston. But, uh, between now and July, we'll have that license, uh, and I believe it's gonna be necessary. And I'm gonna defer to Chief Gonzalez over there. He brought it to my attention and thank you for that. I really appreciate that. And we're ma, making strides to make this safer. If you notice, the first, uh, the first time we did it, we had it on the ground. We lit them off the ground, which was, you know, people said, this is the way to do it, but then that didn't seem real safe. And so we, now we've built tables that are forty-four inches tall, and so they're like line of sight. And so we're, we're trying to make it safer. Any, any contributions from anybody that have, um, ideas about how to make it safer, we are totally open to that, cause this was our first go-around. Uh, so anyway, any questions about money spent or the way anything went down?
I have a question, um, two actually. That's okay. Is this the normal protocol to just do an expense report for this amount of money?
In Jeff's defense, I went back and I looked at what we did when we did the spending policy. Now knowing what I know now versus what I didn't know when I became mayor, we didn't specify.
Okay.
We did a resolution on the spending policy, but we didn't put any policies and procedures in place.
I'll put it on the agenda next time. Um, I won't take up time here, but that is a big no-no in my opinion.
What, what specifics are you looking for?
Oh, the specifics is with the municipality and taxpayer money, you should show every dime you've spent and what for.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's listed there.
Well, I could type that up, but I could also not actually spend that money too.
Okay, so in, in that defense, there actually is, I turned all that in today.
Okay, so we have receipts?
Yes.
But I still think, I still think we need to have some sort of.
We need to have a form. Sabrina actually does have a form. We need to have dates and times. We have, say, for example, five days to turn in receipts.
Right, yep, perfect.
And when we did the resolution, we didn't put that in there.
Okay.
So. When that was produced, I was being pressured to turn the numbers in so she could finish a spreadsheet.
I got it, yeah, that makes sense.
But I didn't have my receipts there to turn in.
Yep.
And I have typically done my expense report by the following.
I just don't want there to be a precedence that we can just turn in a typed up thing, and that just doesn't look good for us, I don't think.
I agree.
And I think our bookkeeper's fairly strict on that.
Okay, okay, good. And then my other question was, I wasn't here for the meeting for, uh, talking about the New Year's event, but it states in here that portion of the fireworks that were purchased would have leftover for this coming July. Did that happen?
That was an opportunity to save a little money, but whenever we, we went ahead and we were able to cut back on other things, so we went ahead and, and discharged all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't.
So there's no, there's no leftover for this July? Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Any more discussion? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next discussion item, uh, having the opportunity to allow alcohol in the event center under a lease agreement. Bud, you brought that to the table, so you can start the discussion.
Yeah, I want to amend that to say on public properties. You know, it's what it actually says. It doesn't say the event center. It says there should be an option.
What do you consider public property?
To allow alcohol at public properties, okay? So I consider public properties, anything that's owned by the city.
Yeah, city properties.
I would guess that would be public property. And, uh, of course, not restricted properties like the water plant and the sewer plant, but, you know, the, the park as we saw during the New Year's Eve celebration. I mean, there were people drinking out there and, and they're gonna do that. That's gonna happen. I mean, that's just, you know, you build a bonfire, people gonna stand around it and have something to drink. I'm just gonna tell you that. Yeah, that's just gonna happen. So I'm, the main thing I wanted to say here is, is that the civic center, my class is gonna have class reunion coming up, okay? And we're, this is out, you know, cause there's no way to have any alcohol.
Yes, there is. Have you read the, uh, lease agreement? Here's a copy of the lease agreement that does allow alcohol if you bring in a police officer and you sign it in a waiver.
But it depends on, there's, there are restrictions to that as far as how many people you have, as far as to how many.
How many officers?
How many officers? There's, there's a bunch more than just, just what you just said. There, you have to have a certain amount of police officers per, certain amount of people. You have to have, uh, I mean, our insurance would have to cover it. There's just, there's, there would be a lot of legal ramifications.
Yes, what are you, are you proposing that we do it or not?
I'm proposing that we discuss it. To keep us from being hamstrung to where, is that cutting our rentals down? Because you couldn't have a wedding, you couldn't have a, a wedding reception here in this thing. If they were gonna drink a glass of champagne, not allowed. Sorry.
If, if, if they, if they agreed to this here, why, why wouldn't they?
Well, can I, can I mention something on this form though? It says, does it concern a city ordinance? And it does. We currently have an ordinance, so that needs to be amended.
We have an ordinance in place that does not allow alcohol on city.
I, I know.
There's a sign on the door.
I understand, but we would have to amend this because the state of Texas, the Texas Bureau of Alcohol, you have to change your zoning ordinance for your city. Before you, you, so you need to change this before you can talk about this.
Yeah, you can't just sign that paper.
Right.
Well, I mean, that's what y'all just said.
But this is in the rental agreement and they do sign a waiver. So that part we can do because the civic center is a rentable building.
There's just other stuff here that like she said, that would have to be pre-done before that would happen. And I don't know what that involves.
I'm just sorry, I'm sorry, but we do not, we can't even have people not run a stop sign. And I, I'm, I love my beer. I'm not gonna sit here and say I don't, but I'm not gonna sit here and, and be comfortable with opening this up after, since nineteen seventy-five, we've said no. And then suddenly we're gonna say, ha, yeah, go out there and sit out there and drink while my kid's playing in the park. I mean, I think maybe some, with approved events, sure. But I don't think carte blanche, walk down the street and carry your beer with your toddler. Cool.
I like the purpose of what Bud's saying.
Yeah, it's for renting this place.
But it's not, that's already taken care of in the, you're saying public property, which opens it up to parks, which.
Well, it opens it up for fireworks. I mean, we're not enforcing that.
Well, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because now that's something that, moving forward, we need to look at, you know, um.
It's unenforceable. It's unenforceable. We don't have an enforcement. Unless we hire our own police department.
Again, again, what I'm saying is, moving forward, the next event as such would be Fort DeJalonne. So we need to start thinking about, are we going to hire someone to enforce it?
Right.
So.
Jefferson County can enforce open containers laws.
Yes, they can. Yes, they can.
It's the state of Texas.
She brought up a, a great point. And as a councilman, and not only as a councilman, but a, a citizen of Belville Oaks, one of the reasons why my wife and I moved back here, one main reason that she brought up, the crime rate is less than one percent. I looked over this when I saw the agenda item, and I want y'all to think about this. Um, first of all, you need to think about if it's more of a liability or asset.
Right.
That's why we're discussing.
All right. Let's think about if it's more of a liability than an asset. Statistics have shown when we do this, and if this is done, and if we're out for it to be done, crime rates are gonna increase. It's gonna make the city less family-oriented and kids safe.
Right.
Alcohol has been known to alter. It, it's just gonna, for me, per. It's just going, for me personally, is this a whole bunch of negative, a whole bunch of negative.
Most of us are responsible, but they're, it only takes one and they're everywhere.
Yes, yes.
When it, when it comes to our turn to talk, we're going to, when you're finished, we're going to come on down this way.
And so, you know, I just want us to think hard about it, you know? The reasons why we moved here, the reason that, that Belvelox, I, 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 I hold this city in high regards when I talk to people and they want, and they ask me where I live at. And it's because of a specific reason, my girls can go and ride their bike. I feel safe without even having to watch them.
Right.
And you bring in a different group of people, you know, it's just, yeah, I, I, that's just my, my, my take on it, you know?
All right, so my take on it, spit.
On the civic center itself, if we have it in the agreement where they can have alcohol, where they're obeying to the, have law enforcement for so many people. I'm okay with that for these events. But out for the, our public parks where our kids play and stuff like that, because that's going to open up doors to go, hey, I can go out here and sit out here and drink anytime I want. And I'm not in favor for that. I'd rather keep it as a safe zone. Anybody can have a good time without alcohol. I mean, we know that people are going to sneak stuff. That's going to, that would be on them.
Right.
But if we open that door, that we're going to become liable.
Frankly speaking, we can't open the door.
Yeah.
For the most part. I mean, we can have a policy that restricts. You can have a, like a caterer that has their own license, that has their removable bartenders in theory. And that's why you have, what's it, October fast out of the parks. Licensed TABC, licensed folks that.
You can't sell alcohol, but you can give it away.
But these.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is we can't, we can't allow open beverages as a public policy.
We need to keep our events as family events because that's what they are. They're for our residents, family oriented.
I, I kind of like the idea of possibly opening the door for approved events.
And moving into that segue, go ahead, Jim.
So whenever, I think it was February or March, when we started talking about the new rates. If you go back and, and I don't know that it made it in the notes, but I know we had this conversation because of what has just been brought up. It's a quagmire. We have so many hoops we need to jump through to make this happen. Because in the seventies, there was a, an ordinance passed, or resolutions, there, there shall not be alcohol on public ground, on city-owned property. I don't know how we get around that without making an amendment. So whenever. So whenever we started talking about these rates and the old alcohol policy was in there, I asked everybody at this table, do, can we just take this out of it for now? So that we're not going to have to worry about the marshal or anybody coming in here until we can get this discussed like we're doing now. So that document right there should be null and void according to that meeting and the vote that we took. And that's my position on that.
I have two copies, Sabrina. One.
It should not be in there.
March the 21st and this is the one that's being used by the city right now.
Every quarter back up.
So is that alcohol provision with restrictions in an ordinance now or?
Yes, in 18.
Yes.
My, my intention, I mean, my thought, when Bud brought this up first, I thought Bud, you were just talking about allowing alcohol in this building to enhance the rent, the rent value.
And I don't, I like that, yeah. I didn't know it was in there in that lease agreement.
And, and that, you know, the only reason we would do that would be to increase revenue from the rental. And there's a payoff. We don't know how much you think we could get more from, if we allowed alcohol in here. And is, is it worth it?
Well.
Risk versus reward at that point. Because I mean, it's being, we have the ordinance in place. We have state law regarding open containers.
You know.
So I don't know if anyone's read the state law, but state of Texas does not allow you to ban it completely in your city. You can ban where your primary business is done or your city-owned property. But I can walk down the street, as long as I'm not on the street, I'm walking in the Eastman's County, I can drink.
Absolutely.
So, and you can't do anything about it. But on the parks, for sure. Near schools, sure. Hospital, sure. But.
That's why our parks are also designated as a child's safety zone too.
My, my thought is that we, we haven't made, I mean, it's really kind of a new subject. We haven't made a lot of effort to try to rent this building out and get some revenue from it. So we really don't know what it is. My suggestion is we, we, we hold off, don't do this. Let's see what we can do. And if it sits here idle for, you know, 51 weeks out of the year, then maybe we ought to reconsider. Cause this is really just fairly new.
Why can't we amend that ordinance? What's the problem with doing that?
Well, there's no problem doing anything, but I'm saying we don't need to.
Y'all can sit and gather what y'all want. You know, I mean, generally champagne toast and weddings, those are, there's exceptions for that. Allowing licensed caterers only, you know, TABC only at private events, that's pretty easy to do. You just have to provide a TABC licensing.
So we could actually.
But y'all, but y'all can say, no, we will not rent to anyone who's trying to use a TABC licensed caterer. You can be stricter, you know, but that's y'all's decision. I, I have no opinion on it, even though this is why it's in this discussion.
I'm just wanting to generate discussion.
You know, there's a lot of different directions and so, so I don't want to spin my wheels. So, you know, maybe this is an ongoing discussion, but it's, there's a legal way. TABC has some safe harbor language where a private one comes in and y'all can say yes or no at civic center, yes or no at city-sponsored events, yes or no at private events on city property that's not the civic center.
Right.
Like the car show, it's a private one.
Yes.
Would they be allowed to have a TABC licensed caterer do a beer garden?
Last time the, the, the car show was a city event, right? That was private only by TAS?
That's, the, the, there's car event will probably be stretched differently. But I'm just saying, that's like an example of, if the car event is not city-sponsored and it's private, can they in a non-civic center deal have a license or whatever, well, yeah, licensed TABC compliant?
And that would take the liability off the city if they're a licensed.
Yeah, because it's, it's, TABC, it's fully on there.
Exactly.
Well, if I want to have a private birthday party, it's where?
At the park?
In, in here.
If it's a birthday party.
Oh, yeah. Well, you have to sign, you have to sign the liquor.
In here is a little easier.
Yeah.
Well, if I want to have it at the park, it's private. You're not invited. Jeff's invited.
It's a private event. That's, that's easier to dictate.
But so.
And I was saying, most municipalities do allow private parties if you comply with TABC. They don't care, you know, you just have to, you have to comply with TABC requirements.
And part of that requirement is if you're going to have a beer garden, you're going to have to have the beer garden there. They cannot take the alcohol out. Because I mean, like.
But is that a public event or a private event?
Well, the YMBL is very, very public. And you can't take it.
So that's, I'm, I'm saying that's, y'all need to make that decision.
Where do they have that?
Over by the event, over by the, the soundstage.
We drifted way away from what this was intended.
Yeah, we started talking about the guidelines and all.
Think about what boxes you want checked for allow or not allow.
We don't want to rent the building out and have a bunch of drunks tear walls down and all that stuff. We don't want to have a bunch of people running over the kids when they leave here. We don't want to have loud music playing all up and down the streets when they leave here. We're not trying to infuse that into the city or bring that into the city. My, my point of this was, is are we kind of hamstrung with renting this building out because we don't allow alcohol in any kind of fa, form or fashion? According to the ordinance that I put on here as a supporting document.
Sabrina, have we lost any rentals because we don't allow alcohol? Has anybody said, hey, I don't want to rent it?
We've rented it twice, right?
Twice.
Because of the cost, not alcohol.
It's going to be more so the cost.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
I think this is a good discussion. I'm ready to say no.
Yeah. We're not voting on it anyway.
Yeah, we're not voting on it. Uh, let's go ahead and go into the reports and we'll start with Jeff. If you'll start the reports.
Mayor, do you mind? We already said, but also.
Jeremy, so?
The executive session, a matter was discussed that needs to be voted upon.
Oh, did I miss that already? Sorry about that.
But after that's voted on, may I be asked?
Yes, most likely. I'm sorry about that. All right, let's go back to consideration, discussion and approval of changing the employee title. Kind of a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you Drew for reminding me. I did not notice that.
Sure, get a vote.
I thought we did it, but.
We did that.
Oh, she read it, but we didn't vote on it.
Yeah, we didn't vote on it.
Oh, right.
We didn't put our eyes in it.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So now it's official.
It's better, okay? I'm not taking.
You're excused.
All right.
So what's happening to this?
Okay.
It was just a discussion.
Okay, so this is a report from my department, Community Events. And part of the other thing that I do, I help Sabrina maintain the, the, the city's website. And I've got a little bit of a trivia question here. I'm going to, I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with Stephanie. If you just had to pull a number out of the air, how many, how many hits to that website would you think we have in a one-month basis?
You can't ask me because I was already told. So I don't want to pretend I'm really, really smart.
So you've already.
I've already been told.
Roger doesn't know and I'll cover this up.
Yep.
Uh, 25.
25 in.
For the month.
For the month, okay.
25, 25 with no zeros.
Seven? For the month? Okay. What about you?
You saying the website, we have power?
Yes. How many, how many people you think go to our website every month?
I would say. You want a percentage or a number?
A number. Just a, just a, just a raw guess.
No more than five.
Okay. So would you believe that in the month, well, let's say in the past 12 months, we've averaged 51 visits a day?
A day? A day.
18,520 visits since February of last year.
Were they all Jeff Pivota?
No, they were not.
That bunch of me.
There's a lot, there's, there's a lot more. That was surprising.
Yeah.
This was surprising. So it doesn't go into, I, I'm sure it would check.
I did 25 times yesterday.
The IP address and all, but it doesn't go into the unique numbers, but still that's a lot of hits.
Right.
So anyway, and then I, whenever I wanted to do a, a personal reflection on what I used to pay for my commercial site. It was $487 a month for my site to be up and, and running. And so that's, that's about on par with what we saw last time. And we are going to do another, another proposal for a city website developer. Okay, so that was just kind of a, opened up with a little trivia there. Kind of interesting though, right? Okay, on, on the, we've talked about these ordinances. How we've got a spreadsheet full, we've got 270 ordinances or so, and they date back to 1963. What I would like for us to think about, we won't need to vote on or anything tonight, just, just think about this. If we all, if the six of us would, would be assigned four ordinances per month. And our assignment would be to review, basically read over it, mark it for revision or mark it for removal. Okay? If we all just did for a month, then every single year, all of our ordinances would be reviewed. And nobody would be overtaxed on that because there's some of, some of the 270 is simply announcing an election. I mean, it doesn't take much to do that. But what this would do would, would bring us all kind of a little closer to our city charter and, and, and what our ordinances actually speak to. So anyway, that would give us a.
Well, I find the errors too, because I did find a couple yesterday.
I'm sure.
Is there 280, is that counting revisions?
270.
Or is that 270 there?
That's counting.
That's everything.
That's counting revisions. She said.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so it wouldn't be a big deal. The first year we go through it, it would jump down from 270 to probably 116 or something to that nature.
Well, well, some of them have five or six revisions attached to them.
Yeah, there's not, there's not 270 listed for you.
No, there's not 270.
They're on the, on the cities, I just got the number off the city's website. I went to the spreadsheet and it said 270.
No, I know, I have it printed off right here. There's not 270 here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So.
Counting revisions.
I'm just saying, if we had that many, it would only be four.
Right.
Per person.
Right.
So this would not be taxing at any, at any level. And I would love to see us be engaged like that. And, and that would, hey, in one year, everything would be updated, revised, reviewed or removed.
Right.
So that's kind of something I'd like to, I'd like to pass on. Uh, one more thing when it comes to community events, there's been several people ask about pickleball. Can we pour a pickleball court? There's a, that's a very hot game right now, but in my mind, I'm thinking, let's not spend money on pouring a slab when we can repurpose or have dual purpose, not only the basketball court, but the covered pavilion over there. All I need is a 22 by 44, I think, and that covers it. For less than $300, or right around $300, we could have a complete setup. The nets, the, the, the court stripes, the balls, the, the paddles, score system, everything there that the office could keep and it's, it comes in a bag and there's, there's hundreds, literally hundreds of styles of this. If we were to get a pickleball setup and promote that. And, and then what they would do, let's just say Jim wants to have a pickleball, a, a, a couple of hours of pickleball over the weekend. He would simply call the office, they would take a deposit on it or hold his driver's license, something. We'd figure that out. Some kind of a deposit. It would be no, no charge at all. Jim would end up walking out of there with the, with the bag full of goods and his name would go on that pavilion for a reservation so that he would know that he would have that during the time he wants to play.
Jeff, is the pavilion big enough?
It, the pavilion is, is adequate for that. And so that would, that would show demand and let's give it a year. Let's see how, how many times it gets, it gets used. For less than 300 bucks, I think that'd be a big plus.
It's a good test run.
A test run. And if it does take off, then right there by the basketball court, or in fact on a basketball court, you can get three. You, you turn them sideways, you get three. You could actually rent the back, not rent it, reserve the basketball court, make, make a, make a demand for it. I know we've got a lot of people that play basketball, but if you have a reservation for it and people want it, you have that, you have that desire for the, the citizens to maybe help raise money and let's, let's go out for it and, and make a pickleball court. So.
You can make one on one into the basketball court and not affect.
You're exactly right, because you do them sideways. So in that.
The only thing I'd say about doing it under that shed over there is, is the drop off of the concrete. I mean, that might be a little bit.
Yep, haul some dirt in.
Yeah, put dirt in. I mean, that'd be.
Well, I mean, to me, that's an item coming out of town hall meeting that we all.
I thought we maybe mentioned it tonight, so we'd be thinking about it.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, and maybe it busts. And the thing, the thing I like about what Jeff said is you only dropped 300 bucks on finding something out that didn't work.
Um, our next event coming up is going to probably be the garage sales. Uh, we had, we had budgeted for two this year. And so last year we had it in May, I believe. So we'll see, uh, we'll see what goes. We may have it a little earlier and then have another one at the end of the, at the end of the year. But again, that, that was my report. That's, that's what I wanted to do. I think the next thing up is the community garage sale and it may or may not be.
Are you thinking about anything about a spring cleanup?
That would have been, yeah, we'll have that whenever we have the garage sale. Yeah, we'll have the garage sale one weekend and what doesn't sell gets picked up by the charitable organizations. And then we bring the dumpsters in and what doesn't sell or get given away, gets thrown away. So that's, that's all.
You're looking at April, March, April, May?
Yes.
Uh, no, because not until today that I got a, a sign.
There you go. Lonnie, you have anything to tell us all?
That was 30 minutes ago, Roger.
I'll, I'll, I'll pass my time to Jeff.
All right, Jim, any, any type of report?
I think Jeff go before, you know, why did he get to go first?
Cause I'm, because we always go last.
Yeah.
They're already ordering margaritas before we get through.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything. We, it's kind of same stuff. We're, we're still replacing meters as they break. We're on top of them. Uh, we're down a little bit now, but. We're still replacing meters as it breaks, we're on top of them, uh, we're down a little bit now, but we're still on top of them.
Any reports, Stephanie?
Well, nothing that I was assigned, but kind of ahead of what-
You can tell us about other stuff.
Yeah, kind of ahead of what Jeff said, I started reading some ordinances and just, just familiarizing myself. But I did find some errors that maybe aren't, or maybe opportunities to play, so.
Alright Bud, anything?
Okay, I want to ask everybody that. Week after next, I'm going to have a meeting with Brandon Willis and, and the head of the road guy that's over the road. And I have looked, yeah, I've looked, I rode around today again, and identified some areas that need to be possibly resurfaced. And that's what we want to do, we want to try. My goal is to try to get rid of that pile of rock over there, get it moved, you know, if, whatever's left, if there is any left, move down to the sewer plant so that the park looks nice again, okay, we don't have a rock pile. Now, I rode around and I looked at the, uh, number one is the block on Thousand Oaks from Sweet Gum to Riverbend. Okay, that's the first one that I'm going to point out to them, that's a blocker roadway there, okay? Now, there are some, I'll get to the potholes in a minute, so don't think that I'm not seeing the bad, other bad spots on that road. But, and then there's a block on Chimney Rock on the very east end going to the ditch. It's almost in the same shape, not quite as bad, but almost in the same shape that Jeff's road was on before it got blocked off. It just doesn't have any material on it.
Well, Thousand Oaks never not got done.
Thousand Oaks never got done?
Yeah, okay, okay.
So we're trying to get, we're trying to get this stripped.
Okay.
And then the end of the boulevard, at the turnaround, that didn't get addressed during any of the road work.
The west, the west end?
The west end on the far end, that loop down there, I've been hauling rocks from over here with my tractor down there and dumping them just to kind of satisfy the people, I mean they had holes, you know, big old holes, and that stuff doesn't work, filling up holes, but, you know, it helps. You know, they don't have to drive through water. So I did that. Now, we have potholes on some bad ones right now. And I don't want them to come out and patch potholes until after they look at the other parts of the roads, okay? So it'd be week after next, and then I'll ask them that we need to have a pothole crew come through and fill potholes. But we don't want them to fill potholes on the park that they're going to fix if they're going to get to it pretty soon. If they're not going to get to it pretty soon, then we need to fill the potholes in that, those areas also. So, and I wrote those down, but if anybody sees anything in the city, if y'all would just maybe call Heather or something, she'd jot it down on a piece of paper, Sabrina, and, you know, it's so that when we do have them come out and fill potholes, and the only reason I know this is because of Sabrina, that they try to give them a general idea of, you know, where they need to patch potholes, they're going to drive throughout the whole city, but these will be spots that we don't want them to miss. So we'll give them a list of the spots we don't want them to miss, and then they're going to drive the roads anyway and fill a pothole. But, you know, these will be some bad ones that are affecting people or, you know, because we do that, we've got some bad ones right now out there. I asked Sabrina about the road fund. Currently we have sixty-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars plus whatever hasn't got transferred out of the general fund. We, we made a resolution to have the franchise fees deposited into the road fund. In other words, dedicated to the road, so that our road fund can grow. A lot of y'all have been out here a long time, a long time ago, we had a road user fee on the water bill because we didn't have any money in the road fund. So we had to add on to the water bill to accumulate some money in the road fund. So to, to not have to do that again, we're, we're taking the franchise fees and sticking them directly in the road fund so that it can get built up, okay? And the city's operating off permits and whatever else it is that they operate off of, gambling machines, uh, whatever else they get money off of. We have the sixty-four one ninety, Sabrina's going to fix it to where the, they, the, the franchise fees don't go through the, the city general fund, they go directly in there. So she, there won't have to be a transfer, it won't have to be, when Republic pays once a month, that money won't have to come out of there and get transferred into there, Republic's money will go straight into the road fund. That's just a little clerical thing and we can get that done. Now, the other money that we have is the insurance fund, ARPA, okay, funds that we have, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand- Huh?
It's not insurance.
It's ARPA fund.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's from the hurricane, and we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and something dollars in there. Now, the reason why I'm telling you this is to get to this. We want to try to fix as much roads out here as we can, get the most bang for our buck that we can. But, and I want to get it done as inexpensively as we can, okay? But if we were, had to run over and use some of that money out of the ARPA funds, I will be coming back to the council. And if Brandon were to say, man, we're working right over here and we can do it three weeks from now, well, we may have to call a special meeting or something to, to let the council know that, hey, we're going to spend, you know, they said if we buy the oil, he'll, he'll do the rest of it and get the rock moved and everything, that's my, my goal is for that to happen. To where we don't have to hardly spend any money and they come out, fix these roads and get them fixed, and then we leave our road fund money alone. We will have, we're going to, we're going to get, we're going to over-order pothole material, that, that HP mix. And like, we'll get them to bring a whole truckload out when they come to do potholes. And the remainder of what is left over after they do potholes, we're going to dump over there where we had our little stockpile before. So if we have a pothole that's an emergency, we can go fill. Jim said some citizens would go get five gallon buckets sometimes and fill a pothole if they needed to do that, you know, if it was bothering them.
And where, where is that stored?
It's right behind where the FEMA trailer used to be, over here in the park.
Yeah.
We made a, we poured some limestone back there, we dumped some limestone back there so that Sabrina and them could get in that office building and didn't have to go up that ramp if it was raining, they had to go up that big long ramp. Well, they could pull around the back of the building and park, they were parking in the mud back there.
Okay.
And we put some limestone back there, so there's a little black spot back there where they dumped it out and it's gone now, basically. So we need to, we have a little stock, it lasted, it's like, we got a load one time, it lasted, man, almost two years, you know?
Have you ever considered putting it just right behind this building? Kind of out of sight?
I mean, it's not going to be that much stuff.
Oh, okay, when you said a whole truckload, I was imagining-
No, 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 they're going to use some of it, but whatever they got left, we're, what we're doing is saving the haul, I'm trying to save every penny I can. So we're saving the delivery charge on it, we're not having to pay anybody to deliver it because they're going to pick it up, use it for the potholes and then dump it over there. So, and I try to keep it, one reason, over there and not at the sewer plant or not at the water plant, you know, locked up is because it's more central to the, to the city. And just for me, if I got to get my tractor and run and go get some and run over here, I don't have to go all the way to the sewer plant to go get it and come all the way back up to the corner of Black Gun to put, fill up a pothole.
Does that have a shelf life on it like the other rock stuff?
Man, it lasted, it, it, I never saw it go bad.
Good.
You know, now you have to bust it up, it gets hard, you know, and you bust it up, but then it's back fluid again.
Okay.
So-
No heat required?
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, no, no, you put it in there and pack it down.
Put some meat on it.
It's amazing, man, it is amazing.
It kind of moves while you're watching it, doesn't it?
You fill that hole up on one oh five, coming off one oh five, you know, where you turn, somebody complained about it, it's still pretty solid.
I fill that up like, man, almost, that's been a year and a half ago.
Oh, that was shoot it, is it?
Yeah.
Man, it looks good.
That's two buckets, I put, that's all we had, I put it all down there and, and I could have used one more bucket and it-
Yeah, because my wife would complain every time I drove through.
Every time you go through, yeah.
Oh, it was bang, bang, man, it was horrible.
Good.
But that belongs to the Texas Highway Department down there, that has nothing to do with the county, where that concrete's at, that's, and that takes forever to get them to come fix that, so. And we got it filled with some material that stays there, stays there, hadn't moved. So that's about all I got, I just, if y'all help me out with, with finding out where the medicine needs to be put, then, then I can run that by them and then I'm sure Jody will go into detail of measuring and seeing how, you know, how far this goes, how much material we need and, you know, then we'll go from there.
So we call Heather with that, right? Because we, instead of the administrator, we call Heather with those potholes now, right?
You can call whoever you want to, although you can call anybody. Matter of fact, you write them down and hang them on the door down there, put them in the mail box, drop them in the drop box.
Roger, go ahead.
Are you done, Bud?
Yeah, that's about all I had.
Um, I actually did get a text message from somebody on a street sign, which I communicated with Bud. I called in a work order, just, and the reason I'm talking out loud is, you know, that I'm following the actual protocol and procedure on when I do get a text message from a citizen. Also too, I've had some come to me personally about the running stop signs and speeding and stuff. So my response has been, we're not law enforcement, if they can get it video Jefferson County, it will take all videos and evidence of people that are doing unsafe driving through the neighborhood.
It would be nice if we could get the chief to come to our town hall meeting.
You, you, you hit it up?
Invite him.
He's, he's wanting to get a little bit here, he's, we've invited him and now you see what's going on, he's a little bit closer in.
Just in case, you didn't know, that was Chris Gonzalez, he's the fire chief.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I met him during the hurricane.
I dealt with him for the Christmas parade.
Anything else, guys?
I think Lonnie was saying something.
I lost my train of thought.
Go ahead.
You were, the-
You're having law enforcement for the community?
Um, no, um, there were some meetings ago, um, last year he gave a number, I think, um, I forgot the guy's name, he's the call.
Oh, um, yeah.
Andre.
Yeah.
Dante.
Dante, yes.
I'll leave you Dante's number.
And so- I have it.
Yes, so like, you can pass on to your constituents or whoever has a complaint, yes. So you can get Dante's number from you, from her.
What, what number do you have there, Jim?
His, his cell is four oh nine two eight four one oh eight two. And his office is four oh nine eight three five eight four one one. It's Dante Miller, he's like, uh, second in command to Xena.
Yeah, he's under Xena.
He's a pretty big, big dog in the show.
Two eight four, that's his cell number?
Ten eighty-two.
Two eight four one oh eight two.
Because I do recall on one of the town hall meetings, uh, I forget the lady's name, that was the, uh, sheriff at the time, captain?
Oh, uh-
Xena Stevens.
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah, okay. That, you know, there is a way to turn things into them, videos, snapshots. Getting videos is definitely letting them see who it is, if you can get their license plate number and stuff like that, then they can act on it, but they can't go by his hearsay.
What Jim said about calling Dante or calling the non-emergency number, even if you call the non-emergency number and report that they keep running the stop sign over here, that's going to get recorded somewhere. And this is back to like potholes, okay? The medicine's going to get put where, where it's effective. If they get enough calls, they're going to, they'll, they'll be out, you know, they, they come and- And they can come out here some, but they just don't-
They don't have the manpower?
You're right.
Can I have a motion to dismiss?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, and Dante is actually the, the chief.
For, for, just for the record, I mean, this is not a meeting for those of you who want to stick around. What, what we're looking at doing is doing something similar to the last town hall meeting.